Hello and welcome to the 1,232nd Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions that are adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long?
Is here.
Mrs. De Naro is absent. Mr. Dros is absent. Mr. Ventura?
Is here.
Karen Magno is here. Chairman Willschau?
Is here, and thank you. And also with us tonight, we have Jacob Uhazy. We also have Stephanie Reese, both from our planning department. They will assist us with information about these petitions and answer any questions that we may have for them. Also, for the folks in our audience, what we'll do is read off each of these items. We'll have the petitioner come forward and speak to their item. We'll make our decision after hearing from any other folks in the audience wishing to speak for or against it. With that, we have a fairly short agenda, or two public hearing items. We're going to start with item number one, Mr. Secretary.
Petition 2025-05-02-11 submitted by the Wine Castle requesting waiver use approval under Sections 3.11 and 6.51 of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to operate a food truck on the property at 33415 Seven Mile Road located in the southwest corner of Farmington Road and Seven Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 9.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Uhazy?
Good evening. This petition is to operate the food truck at the Wine Castle located on Farmington, or Seven Mile Road between Farmington and Fillmore Street. The existing zoning is C2 general business. Adjacent properties include across Fillmore Street, a strip mall that includes a Big B Coffee Pizza Hut and a Hair Studio, which is zoned C1 local business. To the north is the old Kmart site that has been approved for a planned general development containing Meyer Fresh and Townhome apartment development, zoned C2 general business. East is currently vacant property that has been approved for a drive-through coffee facility with ice cream parlor, also zoned C2 general business. Northeast of the site across, of the, excuse me, across the intersection is the Winter Garden Tavern, which is zoned C2. And finally, south of the site is Big Burger Fast Food Restaurant with drive-through, which is zoned C2 general business. The site is about .62 acres with about 247 feet of frontage on Seven Mile Road and approximately 110 feet of frontage on Farmington. The existing Wine Castle store operates with an SDD liquor license for off-premise consumption, and the building measures 5,340, or 371 square feet. The waiver use for this falls under Section 6.51 of the zoning ordinance. The proposal is for Papi's Tacos, which would occupy three parking spots in the parking lot on the north side of the existing building, shown on the site plan up here. The food truck measures 20 feet in length, about eight feet in width, and 10 feet in height. The truck would be parked in the Wine Castle northwest corner of the site by the entrance from Fillmore Street. The food truck would operate three days a week from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. There is no plan for a dining area. The original plan had no bathroom access, but I believe that has been updated to allow bathroom access, and trash would be disposed of by the food truck. The existing building will remain the same with no changes to setback or height. The parking, or the zoning ordinance requires for parking food trucks, one space for each 125 square feet of floor area, plus one parking space for each three outside patio seating spaces, plus one parking space for each employee. The total for this petition would be three for the food truck, and an SDD parking requirement is one parking space for each 300 square feet of floor area, which would be a total of 15 for the SDD license. The total site would require 18 parking spaces. The site plan shows 30 spaces or 27 when you, the food truck is in operation. Here's a picture of the food truck that would be operating on site. One thing to note that one of the correspondence, we will see that there is outstanding tax bill that the petitioner has noted, that they have set up a payment plan to pay back the back taxes, but that is not reflected in the notes or, but it is with Wayne County, so we do not have any record of it on, as of now. Also to note is that the bathroom is being remodeled to be ADA compliant. And with that, I also have some correspondence I can read.
Sure, if you'd like to read that out, please.
In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced waiver use approval request. The address of 33415 Seven Mile Road is correct for the subject parcel and should be used in connection with this petition. We have no objections to the proposed petition, although the following items should be noted. One, should the proposed use have the need to occupy or should any of the associated activities impact either of the Seven Mile Road or Farmington Road right-ofways, a permit for Wayne County will be required as both roads are under their jurisdiction. Two, all sanitary sewage from the site resulting from the proposed operation shall be disposed of properly. Three, should the operators need to have water provided for their facilities, they should contact the City of Livonia Water Department to obtain the proper equipment, including a water meter with backflow preventer. This is signed David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the Fire Marshal, this office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with the placement and use of a food truck on the property located at the above referenced address. The site, the office spoke with Building Department Plan Reviewer Matt Sterna, who had zoning concerns regarding the placement of the food truck on this property. If allowed, parking spaces around the food truck will have to be blocked off to create separation distance to allow fire apparatus access in case of an emergency response. A further detailed plan review will take place when the Division receives an official plan set. Signed Brian Kupla, Fire Marshal. From the Police Department, I've reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. I have no objection to the proposal. Signed Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. From the Department of Inspection, pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. One, a minimum of two restrooms shall be provided for the new proposed use, and the fixture count must comply with the Michigan Plumbing Code 2021. The restrooms shall meet the Michigan barrier-free standards and shall be provided. They shall be accessible to the public and not located in a storage area. Permits will be required if this proposal moves forward. Two, the existing dumpster located on the west end of the building does not have a dumpster enclosure, and one is not proposed. Planning and/or council may wish to address this. A building permit would be required for the installation of an enclosure. This department has no further objections to this petition. Signed Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. From the City Treasurer's Office, taxes are owed on this property to the sum 2024 summer and winter with interest and fees is $15,389.41. 2023 winter is $7,686.15. Total owed, taxes owed is $23,000, $23,075.56, plus unpaid water bills of $2,580.63 for a grand total of $25,656.19. This is signed Susan Nash, City Treasurer. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Uhazy. Is there any questions for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
Mr. Uhazy, there, did you say that they are renovating one of the bathrooms?
Correct, to be ADA compliant.
Okay, because Jerome's saying two restrooms?
Yes, I mean, they sent in an email saying that they were renovating that to comply.
Okay, and it's specifically for this food truck?
They may have to answer that one specifically, but it's my understanding that it's in response to the concerns by inspection.
And were they aware of the dumpster enclosure?
I'm not sure if they were aware of it.
Okay, I'll ask the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Uhazy, I know that the Police Department's letter in here says they have no objection, but I'm wondering about someone going into the store and buying a six-pack of beer and coming out and buying a taco and sitting in the car and drinking and eating. I know you can't do that outside a bar, okay? So I'm wondering, has anybody checked out to find out if you could do that here? And whether, if a patron does that, are they in violation of the law? Do we know the answer to that question?
I don't know the specifics of that. I would imagine it's not that different than any of the other SDD establishments that have that and might have food on premises, but that may be something that referred to the petitioner of how they would handle that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for staff?
No.
No? Okay, everyone good? All right. Our petitioner is here. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
If you'd like to start with your name and address for our record?
Judy Welch, 2500 Covington Place, Boomfield Hills, 48301.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Welch. What would you like to tell us about this request? This is a waiver use.
The request was to bring event spaces into the Wine Castle to meet our neighbors and to capture some of the construction, construction crowd on the north and the east side, mostly to meet our neighbors. We're a neighborhood store, and I'd like to get some events going before the Meyer opens up across the street and become more of a neighborhood store, supporting our Little League teams, supporting our school teams. My first event was going to be bring in your 4.0 homework and you get a free taco, you know, after graduation to meet our school teams nearby. That's about it, but I think I'm toast because of the second bathroom. We did comply, I did renovate the bathroom for you, and, but we don't have room for two bathrooms in the store, so.
Okay.
I think I'm done.
Well, let's, let's see what kind of questions that we have from the Commission, and we do have some leeway and flexibility on things, so we'll see what we can do, but we'll have probably some questions for you before we make our decisions, so let's, let's see what kind of questions we have. Mr. Bonjero?
Hello.
Hi.
Regarding to the bathroom, you might want to talk to the Building Department, but you might be able to do a unisex bathroom, ADA compliant, depends on occupancy, so, but he said in there two, but you might be able to ask him.
Yeah, we don't have room for two.
Because you don't offer public restrooms now, do you?
We do.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, yes, you know, our, our people come in and have to go, so I think everybody requires a public bathroom, don't they? Every supermarket I know.
I don't know on the liquor stores, though, do they have to?
We always have, yeah.
I mean, I think technically they're supposed to, I don't know if they...
I think so.
Okay, I guess. You might want to look into the unisex, but you know, you might be able to get around with one.
Okay.
Have you looked at the dumpster enclosure? I was there tonight, the dumpsters look full and there's garbage leaning up against the back wall.
There might be from the renovation.
Yeah.
That's probably what it was. He was trying to finish it today so I could provide finished photos for you, so that's probably what it was from.
Okay, that's kind of what the enclosures are all about, you know?
Okay.
To hide the dumpster one, and to keep all the garbage behind them. Something you, you might want to do regardless of tonight's outcome.
No, you're right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Ventura?
Good evening. Can you tell us how you're going to manage people coming into the store and buying a six-pack of beer or a couple of cans of beer and then going out and buying a meal and then sitting in their car and drinking and eating, which is clearly against the law?
Yeah, that's...
How will, how will you prevent that?
I, I never thought of that. I think that's against the law to do anyway, isn't it? I mean, they could go in and buy a six-pack right now and sit in their car and drink it. It's an in-and-out store mostly. We try to get people in and out quickly, and I, I can't answer that. I hadn't thought of that.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions? Mr. Long?
Good evening. So in your write-up, or in the write-up, it says that you would like to be, have the food truck on-site three days a week?
Yes.
Have you thought that through, which three days it would be and what schedule would be? Would it vary? What would be the...
11 to 9, Tuesday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay, you said that you wanted to try to get some of the construction workers and stuff like that. Do you think you're going to be able to achieve that with that schedule? I mean, I don't know that they're working.
Tuesday usually, yeah. Tuesday, Saturday, and Sunday. I was hoping to, to attract the golfers down the street, and there are a lot of things going on at the park, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
We talked at the study session, no eating area, no picnic tables outside?
No, grab and go.
And tell me again, the truck, you proposed that the taco truck stays there Tuesday, Saturday, Sunday, or does it go home every night? How does that look?
It leaves.
It leaves every night?
It has other places to go on Wednesday and Thursday.
And resets the next day?
Yes, maybe Saturday night, I'm not sure, I could ask him, but...
Yeah, these are things we need to know.
Yeah, it leaves.
How about water? I know water is a potential issue. I just, I just had this Livonia spree this week in all of these rigs, and food vendors needed water. Water hookup and electricity hookup of some sort or another. What's the plan for water and electricity?
He told me it was self-contained.
Okay, he's self-contained, isn't it?
Yes.
How about for his wastewater and his, his waste food? He obviously can't put his...
He takes it with him.
He takes his waste with, back with him when he goes?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the, as Dave mentioned about the bathroom, you know, the bathroom, not only, there is the city saying you should have two, they should say they, they shouldn't be located in a storage area, and I think yours are in the back, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah, which is, which is a bit of an issue, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions? One question for you, Ms. Welch, the, do you know how this vendor is going to deal with grease? So you said that he's going to take garbage offsite, but what about his grease and oil?
He removes everything.
Okay. So I know in researching these types of venues, I've found that there are some cities having issues with food truck vendors pouring grease down sewage grates or, or, you know, sewers, so, which are obviously not made to deal with grease, so I'm curious about that. And if a person, if a person came to this food truck and they picked up some tacos, you said there's not going to be any, any area for them to sit and dine, but there's really nothing that prevents them from eating in their car or staying there, you know, to consume their food while it's still hot, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you're, you wouldn't have any, would you have any, any way to police that or any concern about people staying there to eat?
I, I hadn't thought of that most of the time. When I've done the food truck, it's a grab and go, and I hadn't thought about that. We could address that.
Okay, okay. And then the other concern would be about lighting. Do you know, does this operator have any lighting for his food truck to draw attention to it, or, or even for patrons in the evening if it gets dark out at night?
I'm, I, the one I had seen, I, in Redford, did have it, yes.
Okay, what sort of lighting did they have?
They had it on their truck.
Okay, was it just white lighting, or was it colored lighting or?
It was just white, not colored.
So just like a spotlight or something?
Yes.
Okay.
And they will be under the spotlight. We do have a light, a pole light back in that area.
Okay, so your parking lot's illuminated in that area?
Correct.
Okay, that's good for safety, too. All right. That's all the questions I have for now. Is, if there's no one else with any questions?
Mr. Chair, I've got another question.
Mr. Karen Magno.
When we talk about Tuesday, Saturday, Sunday, and lighting comes around, I hadn't thought about lighting. Is this just for the summer, or are you talking about something year-round, winter?
No, just for the summer.
Through Labor Day, through?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and I got a question for Jacob, if you don't mind. Jacob, we don't have any other food trucks in this city, do we?
Not that are, have been approved through the Planning Commission.
Nothing through us, so there's no, there's no spot food trucks, food trailers, anywhere else in this, in the city. I don't know that I've seen any.
No, other than like special events, like the spree.
Spree is a special event.
Yep, correct.
But with a, with a start and end date. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Jacob, on that same line of questioning, when it comes to a business having, I'm sure there's businesses in Livonia that have a food truck come for a couple hours at lunchtime for special occasions or maybe during summertime. Do those need to be licensed as well, or are they just not?
With Wayne County Health Department, they have, they need to be licensed, but there's no special permit for Livonia unless they're going to be like a regular date and time for a long extended period of time. If you're, we have businesses regularly come in for like grand openings that are just for a couple hours.
Right.
But if it's going to be a ongoing, regular thing, is when they'd have to come in, come into us.
And then get the waiver use?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. All right, if there's no other questions on this item for our petitioner, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anyone coming forward. Ms. Welch, we always give the petitioner the last word. Is there anything else that you'd like to say before we make our decision?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing then, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long?
As much as I'd like to help this business, I think I'd like to offer a denying resolution that the request to allow a food truck to operate Papi's Tacos to occupy three parking spaces in the parking lot on the north side of the existing building, Wine Castle at 33415 Seven Mile Road, is hereby denied for the following reasons. Number one, that the petitioner has failed to comply with all general standards and requirements set forth by Section 6.51 of Livonia's zoning ordinance. Number two, that the proposal is in conflict with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinances to promote and encourage a balanced and appropriate mix of uses, and not to oversaturate an area with similar uses. Number three, that the petitioner has failed to sufficiently demonstrate that the site has the capacity to accommodate the proposed use. Number four, the petitioner has failed to comply with the City of Livonia Treasury Department. Number five, that the petitioner has failed to comply with all of the concerns deemed necessary for the safety and welfare of the city and its residents. Number six, that the petitioner has not sufficiently demonstrated that the proposed use would be compatible to and in harmony with the principal use of the subject property as well as other uses in the surrounding area. And number seven, that the proposal is contrary to the goals and objectives of the zoning ordinance, which among other things are intended to ensure suitability and appropriateness of uses.
And then, is there support?
Support.
All right, a denying motion has been made by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Bonjero. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Oops, you went out.
It should have been Bonjero next.
Yeah, it should have been me.
Bonjero was the supporter.
That's all right.
I thought it was Pete, I'm sorry.
Just switch it out.
I'm sorry, so...
It was Long and Bonjero.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had that wrong.
Okay.
Bonjero says aye?
Yes.
Okay, Karen Magno says aye. Chairman Willschau?
Mr. Ventura hasn't had a chance to speak.
Mr. Pete, too?
I'll vote aye.
All right.
Pete said aye, I thought he did, okay, I'm sorry. I'm all jacked up here.
Dave spoke for him, I think. Okay. And I also vote aye, so the motion carries, it's all right. So that was a motion to deny the request. The petitioner does have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council, if you'd like. With that, we are done with that item, and we move on to item number two, when the secretary is ready.
Let me see if I can get this right. Petition 2025-06-02-12 submitted by Penske Automotive Group requesting waiver use approval under Sections 3.16 and 6.24 of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to operate an automobile repair facility in connection with Bill Brown Ford at 11813 Hubbard Street, located on the west side of Hubbard between Plymouth Road and Capitol Avenue in the southwest quarter of Section 27.
Excellent, good job. Good job. Mr. Ujazi?
Thank you. This is, as you mentioned, on the west side of Hubbard between Plymouth and Capitol. The current exiling is M1 Light Manufacturing. The adjacent properties include, to the west, is the Feldman Chevrolet Parking Lot, which is also zoned M1 Light Manufacturing, as well as C2 General Business. To the north is a parking lot zoned M1 that houses the Bill Brown Fleet Center. East is an industrial building zoned M1 that is used for a fitness warehouse, and the parking area is used for the Bill Brown Ford. South is a Penske property currently under construction, zoned C2 General Business. The property is about 1.96 acres in size, with 300 feet along Hubbard and a depth of 287 feet. It contains a 3,554-square-foot existing automobile repair facility. New site plans were submitted that you did not receive at the E-Packet, but you have in front of you here. There are just some minor changes that included removing some of the addition. The new petition seeks to construct the addition to their existing automobile repair facility, which would total 6,785 square feet. The new building would have a reception desk, new waiting room, one alignment track, 10-car indoor queuing area, a lounge, and car wash. The new building total area would be 40,359 square feet. With the addition, the building will have a minimum 20-foot setback, side yard setback, which satisfies the building requirements. The zoning ordinance requires two parking spaces for each repair bay, plus one for each employee. There are 29 repair bays and 20 employees, which would require 78 parking spaces. Alternatively, under the ITE Parking Manual, garage service centers would require your 55 parking spaces. The site plan shows 52 striped spaces, but they are striped at nine feet. One note on the floor plan states that employees will park across the street in a dedicated employee parking lot. There are no barrier-free parking spaces shown on the site plan, and the petition did not include any changes to signage or landscaping on the site. A dumpster enclosure is shown in the southeast corner of the site, but no additional details are provided on whether there'll be enclosure or it's just open dumpsters. The site shows...site plan shows existing fencing surrounding the property, but currently there appears to be none in the back. The zoning ordinance requires fencing the back lot area to be enclosed with a fence of a type approved by the City Council, with only such openings therein as may be necessary for ingress and regress. Landscaping design requirements in Section 10.3 of the zoning ordinance would require one deciduous tree or evergreen per 40 linear feet of road frontage, one ornamental tree per 100 linear feet of road frontage, and eight shrubs per linear feet, or per 40 linear feet. The site would require eight deciduous or evergreen trees, three ornamental trees, and 60 shrubs total. The site plan submitted June 30, 2025, does not show the required landscaping. The elevations plans show the building painted white. The addition would be made with white CMU and gray CMU along the lower third of the building with white CMU canopy. The car wash additions, building material, would also match the existing building. The existing building will be painted white with gray wainscoting. And then, with that, I have correspondence I can read as well.
Sure. If you could read that, please.
From the Engineering Division, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time. Please note that the parcel has been assigned the address 11813 Hubbard Road. If additional addresses will be required, the owner will need to contact the department after approvals have been obtained. The existing parcel is currently served by Public Water Main and Sanitary Sewer, as well as private stormwater. The submitted drawings do not indicate any proposed alterations to the existing services, so we do not believe there will be any additional impacts to the existing utilities. Should public utility service need to be altered for the proposed project, the developer should submit engineering drawings to this department to determine if permits will be required. Any work within the Hubbard right-of-way will require permits through this department, including approach and sidewalk removals. Signed, David Lear, Assistant City Engineer." From the Fire Department, "This office has reviewed the site plan connected in connection with this request to renovate a commercial building on the property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to the proposal at this time, with the following stipulations: Provide code-referencing, plans, and permits for fire suppression of these added areas. A further detailed plan review will take place when the division receives an official plan set. Signed, Brian Kukua, Fire Marshal." From the Traffic Bureau, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to proposal." Signed, Paul Walters, Sergeant, the Traffic Bureau. From the Department of Inspection, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. The proposed change in use will need to comply with the 2021 Building Code and International Fire Codes. The building will require a fire suppression system designed for this purpose. Parking spaces shall be 10 by 20 and double striped. Signage has not been reviewed. Signage shall comply with the zoning ordinance, or the sign ordinance, or a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals will be required. The parking lot shall be maintained in a satisfactory condition as to be safe, attractive, and free of hazards, nuisances, or other unsafe conditions. This department has no further objections to this petition. Signed, Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection." Finally, from the Treasury Department, "All taxes have been paid on this property. Signed, Susan Nash, City Treasurer."
Okay. Any questions for planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagna.
Jacob, any special requirements for this car wash thrown in the back of the property? Or is it so minimal use that doesn't really apply?
I think, because I believe this is just for the service station. It's not open to the public. That wouldn't be the additional...
Not generating a lot of water, a lot of wastewater, nothing like that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good question. Anything else for staff? There's nothing else. Our petitioner is here with us. Good evening, sir. I ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
Charlie Harris, 2555 South Telegraph Road, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And what would you like to tell us about your petition?
So, everything is spelled out well in the documents that were submitted. We do plan to bring all of our service operations from Bill Brown to this location, consolidating this, and making a way for customers to enter and have their vehicles serviced. This is more of a long-term service-type use, where they're bringing their vehicles in, dropping it off, and then most likely leaving for an extended period of time. The parking provided on-site is relative to what the use is within the building. We also submitted a plan that shows the parking lot to the north, east and south, which will all be, all serve Bill Brown Ford, seeing that they are adjacent properties and uses.
Okay. Is there any questions for our petitioner? Mr. Ventura?
Harris, is it? Mr. Harris?
Yes.
What's going to happen with the Quick Lane building? Is that going to...is Quick Lane service going to move over into this facility, or will that remain standalone?
So, Quick Lane is to the north, and that will remain a standalone for oil changes and tire rotations, that type of quick service.
That's not going to become part of the...
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagna.
On one of the elevations here, I see the overhead doors to the south are being removed. Is the...are the doors going to stay, and are they going to be painted? Do they stay there, or are they going to be completely removed? On that picture, the top picture?
Top left side.
Am I looking at the top-left picture? Are those overhead doors?
Those are overhead doors. It says infill dock and replace doors, so that it's currently a loading dock. We're bringing that up to grade, and we would replace it with new doors to suit the need.
So, there'll still be doors there?
Correct.
But there just won't be a loading dock anymore?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. Any other questions? One quick question about the car wash, since it came up. You have an existing car wash on this building at the northwest corner of the building, correct?
Not at this building. This is a new building to us.
Okay. But you don't know if this building currently has a car wash facility?
It does not.
Okay. So, the one that you're going to add on the back is going to be a new...
That's correct.
Wash, okay. And, all right, very good. And then, the main loading for customer drop-offs is going to be on the...they're going to come in from the east side of the building and basically come into a tunnel, if you will?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, they would drop their vehicle off, and the porter or someone would take it into the actual service area?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good. And then, as far as the parking spaces being nine-foot, obviously, for non-customer parking, we generally allow nine-foot spaces, but would customer parking at this location would still need to be 10-foot? Is that correct, Mr. Ujazi?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess it's up to your discretion, but as inspection recommended, the 10-foot.
Sure.
One clarification, the parking spaces on the entry to the building, there's eight located across the front, those were labeled at 10-foot.
Okay.
So, those would be customer parking spaces, while the others would not.
Okay. So, that would be your customer parking?
Correct.
And then, the other spaces would be for employees, or temporary storage of vehicles as they're getting shovelled back and forth?
Correct.
Okay. And then, will any repair facilities continue at your actual dealership, just oil changes? Or would all service go to this location?
Not all service comes to this location, but a majority of it does. There will still be some service in the existing building.
So, quick service, basically, or would happen at...shorter-term service would happen at the dealership. This would be more for longer...
It's similar service at both. One, at the dealership would be more heavy engine repair, transmission repairs. This would be kind of midterm repair, while quick repairs, oil changes, tire changes, would happen at the Quick Lane building to the north.
Oh, okay. Interesting. All right. And is there a reason that you're separating those? Is it because of the equipment that you have at those facilities? You don't want to move it, or...
Restriction on square footage.
Okay. Repairs are a big thing. All right, good. Is there any other questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chair, I've got one more.
Mr. Caremagna.
I recall at the study session, we said no collision work will be done at this site.
That's correct.
That'll still be done on Plymouth Road at the old Terrace Theater?
That's correct.
We talked about leaving unreparable cars on-site, engine jobs, rear-end jobs, big, big, big repairs. What is the plan there for something that you've got to do an engine job? How long will it sit outside? And does Penske Motor Group or Ford, you have a plan to keep those cars from sitting outside for long term?
When those vehicles are under repair, they're in the shop, in the enclosed building?
So, if you've got something that's going to be waiting for big repair, you don't tow it outside and leave it set for weeks or months on end?
No. The vehicles on the exterior are typically when customers bring a vehicle in while they're waiting to be serviced, so they're not in-service vehicles.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caremagna. Any other questions for our petitioner? Here nothing else? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? No one is leaping forward? Anything else you'd like to tell us, Mr. Harris, before we make our decision?
I appreciate your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you for coming, and let's see what happens. If there's no other questions on this item, I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bongero.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that this request to operate an automobile repair facility in connection with Bill Brown Ford at 11813 Hubbard Street shall be approved, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time the building permits are applied for. Number two, that the site's landscaping shall be enhanced to meet landscaping design requirements in Section 10.3 of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance, and thereafter permanently maintained in healthy condition. Number three, parking spaces on the property shall be 10-foot by 20-foot and double striped. Number four, that the appropriate recordable legal instrumentation, such as a cross-access agreement that gives notice and outlines the terms of how subject property would share parking and access with abutting properties, be applied to the Inspection Department at the time a building permit is applied for. Number five, no signs, either freestanding or wall-mounted, are approved with this petition. All such signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Planning Commission and City Council. And number six, pursuant to Section 19.10 of Ordinance Number 543, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only, from the date of approval by the City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bongero, supported by Mr. Ventura. Is there any discussion on the motion? Is there any interest in the maker of the motion in adding a provision, which we would...I think we normally would have on a lot of repair facilities, about storage of...
Exterior storage.
Exterior storage of parts and vehicles that are in disrepair, that type of thing?
Yeah.
Is there any interest in adding that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Is the supporter okay with that?
Supporter agrees.
Okay. Mr. Ujazi, do you understand what we're referring to?
Yes. And may I make one more suggestion of...
Feel free.
Possibly alter number three for the 10 by 20 double striped, to say something that was required in the customer parking.
Is the maker okay with that?
Yeah. So, what you're saying, they said not...don't require 10 by 20?
Don't...you know, all the back parking wouldn't require that, it could be the nine feet, but the actual customer parking would be a...
I'm fine with that. I'm totally fine with that.
Okay. The supporter's fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So, we have a couple alterations to the motion. Is everyone okay with understanding what's going on? Any other questions or concerns?
I would go on record saying that I'm not a fan of the nine-foot spaces, no matter what, but it won't keep me from voting yes on this.
Okay. Thank you for that comment. And if there's no other comments on the motion, then a roll call is in order. This is to approve.
Mr. Bongero?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Caremagna votes aye. Chairman Wolschow?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. Good luck on your project.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. That closes the public hearing section of our agenda. We have approval of minutes, Mr. Secretary.
Approval of our minutes for the 1,231st public hearing and regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on June 10, 2025.
And all members are present, with the exception of Ms. Dinaro and Mr. Droz, so a motion is in order.
Motion.
By Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Bongero. If there's no objections, I think we can safely show five on that. I don't see any objections, so we'll mark that as approved. That takes us to the end of our agenda. Any other business to come before the commission? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Mr. Ventura and...
Support.
Mr. Bongero got it. And that's, again, a motion to adjourn. If there's no objections, I think we can show five on that as well. No objections. We will mark that as approved, and that takes us to the end of our meeting. I want to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to the community, and I'm going to wish a good night to City Livonia. We are adjourned in the meeting at 7:45 PM. Good night, Livonia.